Are you ready? No. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting for July 28, 2025. It's 6:00 PM and I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of prayer by Commissioner Jay Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Holy Spirit. Good and gracious God, we praise you and we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for every human life, born and unborn. Every life is precious since it has been created in your image and likeness. We thank you for bringing us together this evening. We come to you asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Please guide our discussions and decisions and help us to work together in unity and wisdom. Amen.
Next is a pledge of allegiance if you kindly stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Samples.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
For him as present.
Thank you. Item number five on tonight's revised meeting agenda is entitled Approval of Agenda. Can I get a motion?
So move Deaton?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Deaton with support by Commissioner Domas. All those in favor, voice vote, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing nine to zero. The agenda is approved. Items six, A, B, and C are various correspondences. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to place on file Sample.
Support Deaton.
All those in favor of placing A, B, C on file after a motion by Sample, support by Deaton, voice vote kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear nine to zero on that. We're at number seven, which is called to the public. It's a three-minute call at the beginning and later tonight at the end there will be a two-minute call. If you've had time, please fill out a card and get it to our ace clerk and then we'll get to people on Zoom if there are any. You may proceed with cards.
Doug Helserman, Handy Township, followed by Steve Williams.
Oh, I thought I tried. I thought I pushed it wrong. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Doug Helserman from Handy Township. I just wanted to talk to you about the favorable news and views. It's one of the, I think, one of the best papers in our county and maybe in our state and it's probably top 10% in our country. Steve Horton, the editor, allows many opinions to be presented in this paper and I wanted to talk about one that was in this paper, which I'm happy we have the First Amendment right to discuss it. Anyways, Judy Dobinmeyer gave an article, I believe it was in the July 20th edition, where she pointed out that Tom Barrett, if Tom Barrett would have voted in favor, the House would have asked the DOJ to release the Epstein files. The problem is she is a day late and a dollar short because for four years the Biden administration had the ability to release these documents and eight years of Obama. So the Democrats have nothing to speak about there. I think that, and so the Democrats and Judy Dobinmeyer and the Democrats of our county have to explain on behalf of their party why the borders were open, why drugs flowed into our country, why there was child trafficking. The recent revelations about the Obama administration's involvement in using the Steele dossier to smear and they use it as an attempt to remove President Trump in his first term have to be addressed and I hope our country will address that. But it seems to me that Judy Dobinmeyer and the Democrat Party would be much better for our country if we had pulled together with our president to accomplish the good that he is doing for our country and I just ask for unity in our country to do what's good and what's right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome.
Steve Williams, Marion Township.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening. Good evening.
So Commissioner Domas will remember, well, first I should tell you I'm here tonight
because I know that you're looking at funding for the specialty corps and I am here to ask you to continue to fund the Veterans Court. Commissioner Domas may remember that I was on the board at the time this first came up and we went on various field trips and I thought that this was a great idea and I know that it has to do more with criminal actions and things, but I recently had a court experience, not as being charged, but as a witness. And I have been dealing with Livingston County employees since I was a little fourager, right? Nine years old, seven years old. This was the worst I have ever been treated by a county employee and I recognize that judges are hybrid county-state employees, but Judge Longsworth opened that court up by saying, "Well, thank you for your service," but in that kind of tone of voice that says, "Well, I really think you're just a baby killer, but this is a politically correct thing to do." Followed by my first appearance on the stand ever as a witness, being denied the ability to testify about my subject matter expertise. After that, it went downhill. She asked me twice over the course of three different hearing days if I'd ever been court-martialed, which shows a high level of ignorance about the military because I would not have retired as Lieutenant Colonel after 28 years had I ever been court-martialed. She threatened to hold me in contempt of court when she didn't like my answers. The opposing side actually had a, was there improper per, so she acted as if she was their attorney and questioned me. She asked me how tall I was. She asked me how old I was. She asked me where I worked, all kinds of non-pertinent type questions, right? One of the things, and each morning when I've been in that courtroom, she starts out with is by asking people to speak up because it's so noisy up here at the bench. She never asks the people in the audience. I have a 70% disability and from a VA disability service related and a portion of that is hearing loss, right? Hearing loss disabilities are the most common disabilities for all veterans and yet if I didn't hear her say something, she threatened to hold me in contempt of court. Now, she doesn't know anything about my background and all I know about contempt of court is what I see on TV, where they lead the lawyer out and go throw him into jail, right? She doesn't know if I've ever been at POW. She doesn't know if I've ever administered a jail. You know, the 300th MP Command, which was my higher headquarters until shortly before 9/11, was the first unit down in Guantanamo to help consent, you know? So we have lots of people out here who have that kind of experience and then when I mistakenly called her ma'am, she literally screamed at me and said, "What did you call me? What did you call me?" You know, I have 28 years of calling superior officers ma'am or sir. Is that my time?
Mr. Williams, I miss.
Colonel Williams.
Colonel Williams?
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
He'll stay major on this paperwork I'm going to give you guys, but it's Colonel.
I apologize for that. I miss, which judge was that?
Susan Longsworth, our junior judge in Brighton.
Thank you, Steve.
And I would like to ask of the clerk if this paperwork in file and I have copies for you as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further cards?
Do not have any further cards.
Anyone on Zoom wish to raise their hand at this point to participate?
Have Cindy, Commissioner, she did not raise her hand, but she did message me. So she should be outside. Thank you.
Proceed with your name and then you've got three minutes.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Cindy Lasso from Marion Township. I am speaking tonight. I would like to support a yes vote for a resolution that is coming before you tonight, supporting Trinity Health, investing in our community grant for LETS to increase and to have a specific bus route that supports our transitional living homes that are La Casa Connection You Service, Bethel Suites, and Kensington Inn. They serve as transitional living in our county. The $48,000 and change grant is amazing because of the leverage that it has. So it leverages over $120,000 in federal money and $72,000 and change in state funds. So that's just an amazing thing to be able to say yes to. The goal being to support folks that are in our transitional living home housing and this comes as a result of a survey that Trinity did that assessed needs, that identified mental health, job training, food and nutrition, transportation being high needs in our county. And as someone who is in leadership at St. Joseph's Food Pantry, I can attest to that. If people do not have housing and they do not have transportation, those two things are key to be able to do the next thing. If you do not have reliable transportation, you cannot get a job or you lose your job because you didn't show up for work. So these two things are key. It looks like how I read the packet. It's to support primarily healthcare, job training, and education centers initially. I would really hope that there would be a way that it could also be utilized to support folks accessing food pantries because I will tell you again from St. Joseph's Food Pantry, we have folks that cannot access the many pantries that are in this county that can support our folks. We have plenty who cannot access the pantry because they do not have transportation. They're waiting for a car, they're waiting for a ride, or there just aren't any routes available when they try and schedule them. So that would be my conclusion. Thank you so much for your time.
Certainly, thank you. Any further Zoom hands?
No, Commissioner, I do not see any.
I concur. With that, the call to the public number one for the evening is concluded. We'll go on to item number eight on our agenda. It's entitled Approval of Minutes. Eight A reads Minutes dated June 23, 2025. B, Meeting Minutes dated July 14, 2025. And sub C, Work Session Minutes dated July 15, 2025. Can I get a motion for A, B, C as a package?
So move Nakagiri.
Support Deaton.
Motion by Commissioner Nakagiri, support by Commissioner Deaton. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero. A through C is hereby approved with that voice vote. We're on to item number nine, which is entitled Tabled Items from Previous Meetings. I have none, but if anyone, any Commissioner has anything, now's the time to bring it up. Seeing none, Tabled Items is concluded. We're on number 10, Reports. Ten A reads Health Advisory Committee Annual Report. Don Smith, Committee Chair. Have a seat.
So first I would like to correct, Don Smith is not here today. My name is Dr. Hallie Austin and I'll be representing the Health Advisory Committee today. I did go ahead and give each one of you a copy of the presentation so you can follow along or you can look on the screen. For those that are out in the public, all of this information is available at the Livingston County Health Advisory Committee webpage. So you will be able to look up any references or resources that I present today. Do I press something here to...? Okay. Advanced slide, thanks. So first and foremost, the mission of the Health Advisory Committee is to serve as a fact-finding and advisory board for the Livingston County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Health. We are committed to providing balanced recommendations that respect both public health and individual constitutional liberties. By evaluating a wide array of scientific literature, including conventional, alternative, herbal, nutritional medicine, we aim to try to inform not only the Board of Commissioners and the Livingston County Health Department, but also the public so that they can make informed decisions regarding their own healthcare needs. So if we advance the slide, these are the action items that we have completed over our time as we have run as the Health Advisory Committee and I'm going to go through each one of these things one by one so you can advance the slide. So the first thing we did was establish with the help of the Health Department our own webpage so that we can put information there that we find relevant. It includes our bios and how we are able to commit to healthcare initiatives. It includes public statements that we as a board have approved and it includes health information that we may deem would be important for people to consume. So the very first thing that we did, and I did put this in order of action items, is we made a general statement regarding community-based or population-based masking for the containment of respiratory viruses. Based on our committee's review of the relevant literature, we did determine that population-based and community-based masking is not necessary to contain respiratory viruses at this time. In addition, that those types of containment strategies could actually cause harm and we do have relevant research to support that. The two big things that we utilized was the Cochrane Review as well as the book on masks and I'd be happy to share that book with anybody. I do have it with me today. Next slide. The next thing we did was try to determine if there were any other ways that we can contain respiratory viruses that did not restrict somebody's personal body autonomy. So one of our committee members, Thomas Latchney, did some research on whether or not portable HEPA filters should be instituted as a main intervention to address respiratory pathogens. Based on the available research, which the four links are put there for you, it would not necessarily be a way to contain respiratory viruses. That would be something that would be supportive, but is not something that would be recommended as a primary strategy to change infrastructure. So thank you to Tom for doing that research. The next thing, I know you already heard from our committee chair, Don Smith, and Lindsey Kelberth because they presented to the Board of Commissioners regarding Michigan Senate Bills 875, 876, and 877. These bills would have required nine additional vaccines added to the childhood schedule in the state of Michigan, but in addition, any time governmental bodies made a new change to the vaccine schedule, they would automatically be included into that as well. So Don and Lindsey did come and present regarding these bills and asked that you as a board make a resolution opposing these three bills. As it stands, these three bills are still in committee and they have done no more work on it, but I am proud to say Livingston County Board of Commissioners was the only one to submit a resolution. It would have put an unfair burden upon our Livingston County Health Department. It would have created an obscene amount of exemptions that would have had to go through the Livingston County Department of Health to ensure students can go to school. But in addition, it would have had another stop gate in 12th grade, which would force all students to again get another exemption for 12th grade vaccines, which could have jeopardized their ability to graduate high school. Next slide. The next thing we did was we really wanted to be prudent to share with the public the difference between traditional studies through the FDA and studies that are using emergency use authorization. One of the biggest issues that we faced during, of course, the COVID pandemic was the fact that there was, the PREP Act allowed for vaccines to be rolled out quickly and swiftly. Unfortunately, when you do something like that, it doesn't go through the necessary 10 to 12 years that other vaccines and other medicinal products would have to go through. Because of that, we have unfortunate long-term and retrospective data that indicates potentially that some of those things being put on the market could have caused harm and did in fact cause harm. So we wanted to just ensure the public understood that the vaccines that were out were emergency use authorized, which means they did not go through the rigor that our traditional vaccines and/or our medicines that are put into the healthcare system have to go through and that can cause a lapse in safety concerns. So we did put a chart on our webpage identifying the difference between a true FDA approval and the difference between an emergency use authorization. And so you can see that at the webpage if you wish to look it up. Next page. Based on our thorough review of relevant literature, including the Pfizer papers, we did make a position statement on COVID-19 vaccinations for healthy populations. Based on all of the review, we did put a statement on our website that the Health Advisory Committee does not recommend COVID-19 vaccines for healthy populations, including infants and young children, adolescents, pregnant women, otherwise healthy adults without underlying risk factors. And then anybody with underlying risk factors should always consult with their trusted healthcare provider for guidance on how they should proceed. You can switch to the next slide. The rationale for this position statement was there was no risk benefits assessment and in fact, we put healthy populations at risk for a vaccine that had major efficacy concerns. As a matter of fact, the vaccines did not stop COVID transmission and many people actually ended up with COVID within the first 10 days after the vaccine. But they changed their position statement on saying that wasn't related to the vaccine. They must have just, you know, crossed in the way. But truly, they just manipulated the data. We also determined that there was limited long-term safety data and that there were alternative strategies that could be used. The long-term safety data, we do not have double-blind studies identifying the differences between vaccinated and unvaccinated and how many harms truly came about. But when you look over the 300,000 pages of the Pfizer papers, it is absolute that they knew that there were major harms and risks, especially 62% of those adverse reactions happened to women. But we also recognize that there was a major adverse reaction happening to our young people. Because of this being withheld and finally being released, they were able to analyze this data and determine that there were so many adverse effects and any other drug that we put on the market with that type of data would have never been allowed to stay on the market. So at this time, we are recommending that people who are healthy really assess whether or not this is a benefit to you versus a risk. There is a, in Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, 5793, has a non-opioid directive. This is something that very few healthcare practitioners know about. We're trying to get the word out. Dr. McCourt came and talked with us over at the Health Advisory Committee and basically what this directive does is allow an individual to sign that they would like to have limited use of opioids so that they don't end up with potential addiction problems later. We do recognize that healthcare is complicit with some of the addiction and opioid misuse and abuse. So by providing patients with education related to that they are allowed to actually ask for limited use of opioids and utilize other strategies, perhaps they can take charge of their own healthcare. So one of the things we're doing after he presented that was we designed a survey to go out to all the healthcare providers in Livingston County to see if they're even aware that this directive exists and if they're not aware, point them to the direction on our webpage where they can find out more information, but perhaps just raising awareness so that they know that they can offer this to their patients prior to them going into EMS or going into a surgical center or an emergency room. They could have this paperwork already in place on their electronic health record. So just providing people with choices so that they're not automatically put on a range of opioids for things that we can technically treat without opioids. So, last page. So items under review. One of the things that we have been hearing from, from the Kahakta and Conway Township supervisors are the concerns related to solar power because they're having a tremendous amount of acreage being taken up with solar farms in those areas. They have come to us three times. We are analyzing whether these risks are health-related risks and how can we be of help at the Health Advisory Committee. But we've also encouraged the Kahakta Township Supervisor, Mark Fostick, to go to the General Government Committee and he will be going there on August 4th with one of our Health Advisory Committee members, Thomas Latchney, to present more information on this to see if there is anything that we as a county can do to support those two townships, which eventually will of course spread into other rural townships in Livingston County. So we're also going to be rolling out that survey and we're getting information back from that survey. We have tabled a couple of things because federal legislation is changing so rapidly with RFK Junior that we don't necessarily need to waste our time and energy because it seems like they're moving faster than we can even make a dent in it. So we're pleased with some of those things, but we did table some of the items we were working on. One of the big things we want to focus on as we move forward is community outreach, particularly I heard one person speak about LETS and about La Casa and Gleaners and some of those mental health agencies that we have and we as a Health Advisory Committee would like to reach out to them to see if there's anything that we can help with, with their organizations. So, last slide. Thank you so much for your time and I appreciate being here and I appreciate you taking the time to listen and feel free to reach out with any questions.
Thanks, Doctor.
Questions, gentlemen? Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. McGuire, right? Yes. In the one slide that talked about opposing the Senate bills, 875, 876, 877, you said it's still in committee, is that...?
They're not moving forward with it at this point.
Is that in the House or is it...?
I don't know why they're not moving forward, but I cannot find any record of what's happening with it. It's basically stalled, which is a good thing.
But do you know whether it's in the Senate or in the House? It's booming, it's the House.
It's a Senate bill.
Yeah, it's a Senate.
It's a Senate bill.
Yeah.
Okay.
It would have actually had Michigan be one of the most enforcing on vaccines compared to all other states in the whole United States. If you do your research on it, it really restricts constitutional liberties for Michigan residents and they can supersede county, you know, referendums on vaccines, which is something I don't think we necessarily want to keep giving power away. We want to make sure that our people have the power.
If I may, I've got a couple other questions.
Certainly, proceed.
Position statement relative to COVID-19 vaccinations.
Yes.
Does the recommendation that you've got, does that apply only to current COVID vaccinations that are available or would this necessarily apply to anything new coming?
This is just at this moment in time. If something new were to come out, we would analyze the information related to that. But to be truly a safe vaccine, it's going to take 10 to 12 years for something new to come out unless they've already been working on it for five years, which means we still have another five years for something truly FDA-approved to come out with the relevant research.
Your comment leads me to my next question, the section on rationale. Recognizing that there's limited long-term... there's limited long-term safety data, and I think you said possibly they're working on it five years. Is it your expectation that they will take a full 10 or 12 years to come up with information that might be meaningful?
I do believe that there are people in power at the federal level that are looking at this really closely. They're scrutinizing the information and it is coming out. I hope that we have answers related to this, but based on all of the research we did, there is not enough research to support that these are safe for healthy individuals, which is why we personally don't recommend them. That doesn't mean we want people to not have an ability to get them if they so wish to get them. That's the beauty of it. You have a choice. We're just giving you information so that people can be better informed. We didn't have informed consent when they were first rolled out.
Right.
So.
Yep. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Question.
Commissioner Helsman, proceed.
The solar concerns, and basically if I understand, their concern is sound?
Sound and psychological impact. So there was a couple of different health-related factors they were looking at. We're still doing relevant research on that, which is why it's still, we didn't make any action on that. The noise decibel range, I believe they said would, they would be able to go up to 55 decibels. In a rural area, that's actually pretty loud. Now that wouldn't be something that would be concerning if you were in an urban area because you already have ambient noise levels that are higher. But in an area where it's farmland and rural, it's not only unsightly, but it's, besides that, they were also concerned about the containment process once these farms were no longer able to be used. How are we going to rehabilitify that area? And not only that, the detriments to the soil by having these materials that can actually invade relatively rich soil. They have some of the best soil in Kahakta and Conway Township for farming and we're utilizing them for solar farms. Not saying that we're one way or another, but we don't have enough relevant data because this is a fairly new technology, so the data's not out there. But we would be remiss if like COVID, there was no data out there, we didn't sound the alarms, if we didn't also do it now while we're waiting for more long-term data to come out.
So if I understand it, as I understand it, it's that the inverters will have this droning sound that's just a constant buzz all the time, like you have buzzing in your ear and that's kind of irritating. So you're looking at research that talks about how that has to do with the people's mental health.
But also their physical health. Because even in children, I mean, there's one study we looked at, you know, the noise in an ICU for a baby can actually be harmful to their hearing. So are we causing damage at a young age for some of these younger populations if we even recognize that these decibels are too loud in an ICU setting? So that was one thing that we looked at. But how can we compare the noise related to solar farms when we haven't really had huge solar farms with rural people living around them to be able to gather that data? So we don't really have all of the data, which is why they're presenting on August 4th to the General Government Committee.
There's, you know, there is some data, studies I think probably were done in the 50s about the effect of rock music that is repetitive and same thing over and over and over and over again, that there was, there were studies that dealt with the fact that that sort of thing would drive a person, certain people crazy, which is kind of the same, which may have.
Something worth looking into, you know, as of, I mean, we heard a veteran talking about his hearing loss and how that affects him and many other veterans. I myself wear hearing aids. I've had severe hearing loss. I would hate if we were perpetuating those types of disabilities because we weren't doing due diligence. But again, I also am not going to sit here and tell you I have all the data when I don't.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Certainly. Commissioner Nakagiri, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Austin, I just wanted to share some information for you, kind of dovetails into your presentation. The county, Livingston County is in the process and it's already underway where we've provided the, our de-identified health insurance claims to an outside party to evaluate our opioid burden to see statistically if our local providers are over-prescribing or properly prescribing, you know, based on numbers. So I wanted to, I don't know if you were aware of that already or not, but it's moving forward.
Great.
There is a resolution on the agenda tonight to approve expenditures for an EMS dispatch unit that enables us to store in the dispatch, if a citizen is so inclined to call EMS and say, hey, I've got a non-opioid directive, please put that in my file. So if somebody is dispatched to their, you know, residence, that they'll be able to, the EMS, the paramedics will know ahead of time that, hey, there's a non-opioid directive. So we're trying to take a lead in this.
I did see that.
Okay. So that, I just want to make sure you were aware of that. And I want to thank you for all of your time and effort. You know, I've gone to most meetings, I haven't made it to all, but I find them very informative. So thank you.
Well, thank you and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. I noticed I didn't get yelled at. No. I listened to Steve. We're on resolutions for consideration, number 11.
Report.
Chair. Excuse me, another report?
I have a report.
32. Commissioner Gross to start.
On Saturday, August 9th, the Green Oak Township Historical Society is going to be conducting a trunk sale. And I've never heard of these things, but apparently if you have goods to sell, you can put them in the trunk of your vehicle and pull right up, pay a small fee and sell whatever you're able to sell. So I've got copies of the flyer here. If anybody's really interested in trunk sales, I got you covered. Thank you.
Commissioner Deaton.
Mr. Chair, go quick. This is on youth leadership. Livingston County was well represented at this year's Boys State, which is in Grand Valley State University. And if anybody's not familiar with this, it is a program that's been around since 1935. Juniors in high school apply for the program and they come from all 83 counties. They are broken into two fictitious political parties and then broken down into six cities. And they run for offices from mayor to drain commissioner all the way for governor. And then two are selected to go to Boys Nation. And you may be familiar with some of the ones that ran for judges. I think we had one from right here in Howell. So Brighton High School, Howell High School and Fowlerville High School had sent students. They all had a great time. The Michigan program is one of the top in the 49 that are offered. We had kids come in from Alaska and Japan who applied for our program. And one of the cool things about going to Boys Nation, which ended yesterday, is you got to meet Pete Hegstra. So that was pretty cool, the Defense Secretary. And one of the other key things is the Ford, Gerald Ford Museum offered some scholarships this year for some oratorical contests, which is pretty cool. And one of the highlights was Political Night there. And they had all the commissioners come in from Kent County. So it was kind of cool to see them get drilled by 108 boys from every question you can imagine. And it felt good to be in the background. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further reports? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with my colleagues, I've taken a deep dive into, you know, we recently received the annual actuarial evaluation from our pension supplier, MERS. And a couple of things just I wanted to point out if you haven't read the report. So in current year, 2025, you know, we are paying approximately $8.1 million a year for our pension benefit. That is estimated to go up to $8.7 million for a rise of about $673,000. That's a rise of 8.34%. And just as a frame of reference, our revenue for the general fund is estimated to increase by four and a half percent. So our pension payment increases going up almost double the rate of our revenue. And that's in spite of all of the things that we've done, that our county administration has done to rein in pension costs. I shudder to think if we hadn't done those things, what that increase would be. I have taken on as a project to really drill in and see what our options are moving forward and to make improvements in either getting a better rate of return or controlling expenses or doing something different. Because having a huge item, you know, it's $8 million, over almost $9 million a year that rises double the rate of our revenue increases is going to be trouble in the future. Thank you.
Any further report? Commissioner Domas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to share some thoughts with the board this evening regarding our opiate program. And if we, I don't know how many people in this room or on this panel have ever, have dealt with the DERA program. I know our administrator has been involved in the DERA program, my brief conversation with him. But I'm concerned with one opportunity that has been bypassed here with respect to the use of opiate reduction funds. The information, excuse me, the information that we have been working with is very broad when it comes to where these opiate funds can be used. And when I reviewed the documentation that we were given, I didn't see enough attention paid to two areas of the possibility that of opium, opiate use. One of them is at the early stages of life in the, in grade schools, for instance. And then when, at the other end, when people are actually infected with this, with this opium issue, and it's virtually a death sentence when they reach that stage and the possibility of cure is minimal. I spoke to a couple of commissioners and members of staff about the DERA program that we used to have here in Livingston County. And it was, I thought, very successful, but it did not get enough support to continue on. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, it's a program that takes place in the grade schools, in high schools, where the Public Safety Sheriff's Department and their people would conduct classes and work with the youth in our school system where they could be captured audience and it would have a positive effect on their lives. These youngsters have a great deal of respect for the uniformed officers and at that age in their life, they're very, they're very influenced by them. I would like to advance a program like that for our school system, but dealing with drugs exclusively. And because funds are available to provide that kind of treatment, I would recommend that we look at incorporating the school system in our attack on opium and the opiate addicted people in our community. The Sheriff's Department would have to provide a couple of their people to conduct classes circulating through all the schools in the county. I've shared this thought with Sheriff Murphy. He is, he is interested in it and wants to, wants to see more about how we would influence or how we would instigate that kind of a program. And I told him that I would share the idea with the chairman, which I did, Chairman Drick, and also with our administrator and other members of the community who are very interested in promoting a program like that. That, to me, would be a wise investment in the funds that we have through this opiate program. And I would like to see that pursued. At the other end, because I think you can really influence kids at that, you can make a difference in a kid's life when you start working with them in their early grades. And it's too late when they get to be a senior to tell them that, well, smoking is bad or drugs are bad or whatever. If you can't get them, get to them in the early stages of the education, you really minimize any sort of positive effect that you can have in their lives. And so I would like the endorsement of the board that we pursue that particular program. And as I spoke with Chairman, he is supportive of it and so is our administrator. I'm not talking for him, but I have talked with him. And so that is my pitch for this evening. We're not ready to put a program on the rails tonight, but I would like to have the support of this board to pursue the use of these opium funds for that purpose. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Further reports?
I've heard four.
Commissioner.
This past week was the Fowlerville Fair, another highlight of Livingston County. They have on Thursday, Friday and Saturday auctions that they auction off different things that the 4H people are involved with. There's small animals, then large animals, and then projects that they do on Saturday. And it was good to see some of our elected officials there participating. And I had the privilege of buying the reserve champion duck. So, I didn't bring my little certificate that showed that I did, so I'll bring it and hang it up at my office if you ever want to see it. But thanks to all, everybody who was involved, it's one of the highlights of Livingston County. Thank you.
Welcome. Any further reports? Seeing none. Item number 10 now is closed and we're on to 11. Resolutions for consideration. 11A reads 2025-07-088. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Sanitary Code Board of Appeals, brought to us by the Broad Board of Commissioners. Can I get a motion?
Move, Gross.
Support.
Helsman. Motion by Gross, support by Helsman. Any discussion? Closed discussion, we'll go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My ears heard nine to zero, it has passed. We're on 11B, 2025-07-089. It's a resolution requesting approval. The bylaws of the recently created Materials Management Planning Committee at DPW Solid Waste. Can I get a motion?
Move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Support, Deaton.
Motion by Domas, support by Deaton. Any further analysis, questions needed? Seeing none. Voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, or my ears, it passes. We're on to 11C. It's a resolution regarding Brighton Number Four Drain Bonds, Series 2025, brought to us by the Drain Commissioner. Can I get a motion?
So move Sample. Support. Helsman.
Motion by Sample, support by Helsman. Any further discussion or questions? Commissioner Nakagiri on the floor.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I want to share with my colleagues some information. You know, I requested some information from Bond Counsel and from our financial advisor who are advising us, the county, on regarding this issue of the bonds for Brighton Four. Our financial advisor provided some estimates on what the likely savings and assessments were for the citizens that live within the boundaries of the Drain District, the citizens that would be assessed, you know, the cost of this drain improvement, which just for everybody's reminder, the drain assessments are paid by people in that Drain District because they are the ones getting the benefit from that new infrastructure. Anyway, she put together some estimates. I asked as a follow-up question, you know, what was the interest rate? I asked as a follow-up question, you know, what was the interest rate that you use, you know, if we were to pledge our full faith and credit, and what was the interest rate if, if we were not to pledge our full faith and credit? The answer was crickets. She, she didn't care to reply. It's appalling that we have advisors that aren't willing to show their work. They're willing to say, well, you need to do this. They're, they've basically been lobbying, in my opinion, to use our full faith and credit. I just want to know the calculations, how they derive their answer. There's also another troubling, there's, there's a couple other things that I find troubling with our advisors. There was a request for full faith and credit a number of years ago. It was during some financial meltdown. I believe it had to do with Silicon Valley bank failures. That at that time, and I was on the board at that time, our advisors came up and said, we, the Board of Commissioners, you are required to give your full faith and credit because of the sentiment of the bond market, that you will not get a bond sold without full faith and credit. And I, so I asked about, you know, the sentiment in today's bond market, is, is the sentiment the same? I'm quoting from Bond Counsel, Ms. Basset said in writing, "Some banks have opened up a bit more now." That, that indicates to me, full faith and credit is not an absolute requirement like it was a few years ago. She also went on to say, quote, "We don't see many borrowings over one million dollars without that pledge." Well, then again, it means there are some borrowing. I would just like to know what the differences are. I did some research on my own, finding that a bond, bonds issued by the Board of Governors of Wayne State University in 2023, they issued some forty-two million dollars worth of general revenue refunding bonds. Those do not have the full faith and credit of Wayne State. Wayne State doesn't have the ability to assess taxes like a county does. And so I asked her, what enables these Wayne State bonds to be sold without a pledge of full faith and credit? The answer is crickets again. I asked about bond insurance as a mechanism to provide a lower interest rate for those in the Drain District without risking tho, the credit rating of those living outside the Drain District. Because when they ask for the Board of Commissioners to pledge our full faith and credit, they're asking every other citizen in the county to shoulder some of the risk. And I, you know, well, the, well, the Bond Counsel and the advisors say, we, we want our bond buyers to have no risk. I would like our rest of the citizens in our county to have no risk. And I, I think there's a bit of inequity there. I also, because of the concerns I have with getting information, I asked, who does Bond Counsel represent? Do they represent the Board of Commissioners? Or do they represent the Drain District? Because it seems to me like they are lobbying on behalf of the Drain District, and, and I just wanted something in writing that says, here's their legal, you know, here's the attorney-client relationship. Same question for the financial advisor. Who are you representing? And the question is, the answer is crickets. So I don't really know, who are they representing? For those reasons, I'm going, I'm not going to be supporting the full faith and credit pledge. Thank you very much.
Further analysis, questions, discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Helsner, you have the floor.
Just wanted to say something. We're in the process of, of calling a new pastor to our church, and one of the famous sayings that a church gives to a new pastor is, we have never done it that way. Which is really one of the stupidest things that you can say, is it not? We've never done it that way, so are we closed to any new ideas? And I think this, it kind of fits here with the bond, the full faith and credit makes it makes sense, but are we doing it just because we've always done it that way? And I, I think that I'm happy that Commissioner Nakagiri has taken it a step further. I think that it deserves, I'll be supporting this, but I do believe that just because we've always done it that way, there's not sufficient reason to continue doing it, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any further questions or analysis? Commissioner Nakagiri, could I ask what might be the cost of the bond insurance? I believe that's the other alternative. I don't think there's four or five alternatives. I think there's one.
Yeah, I, I can, was unable to get an estimate on that. You know, I was essentially doing internet searches, so there are only two organizations that do mutual municipal bond, bond insurance, but I, I don't have a number. I will say this, I, I did get an estimate, you know, using AI, which you can't, you, I didn't have time to confirm it, so everything with AI really ought to confirm. So I asked the question, on a 20-year bond issued by a county with a AAA bond rating, like Livingston County, you know, what would be potentially the difference in interest rate for, you know, full faith and credit and without? It said you could expect to see with full faith and credit, a 4.3% interest rate for the municipal bond. Without full faith and credit, it said you could expect to see between 4.3 and the exact same amount and 4.9%. That's what the internet said. So it, it had a lot of, I'll just say, clarifying, that, you know, it depends. So I asked, you know, what was the range? And so it could be equal to, you know, what they would get with full faith and credit, or it could be 60 basis points higher.
Is Mr. Recker on Zoom? Or is he here?
Here.
Come on up, Ken.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Where would you like me to begin?
Do you believe that it's a difference between 4.3 and 4.9%?
We obtained information from the financial consultant earlier today. Her numbers gave a difference of, hang on as I scroll through this email. It's about 65, 0.65% difference. So she was using a difference of 5.6 to 6.35, and the difference between the 4.6 that, or the, the number that you use, Commissioner Nakagiri, was the Drain Code allows us to add a percent to that bid amount to cover early prepays in the event that makes us fall short. So.
How is it that, I'm kind of curious, you know, you have the answer from our consultant, but, you know, I didn't get it, she didn't copy me on it.
Yeah, that was something that I had drafted earlier today, and I hadn't had a chance to get it to you before the meeting tonight, so my apologies for that. In terms of the risk, I guess if I could address the board on the risk question.
Please.
Drain Commissioner Rednicki was here from 1972 to 1996. There was no issues with financing or potential defaults on any bonds that, that he issued. Brian's been Drain Commissioner since 1996. There's been no issues with payment or defaults on any of the bonds that we've been involved with since he's been Drain Commissioner. So since 1972, there's been no issue with, with risk in terms of failure to get, failure to make payments or collect revenue to make payments on Drain District bonds.
So you're saying that the full faith and credit never got triggered?
That's correct.
So that's the history. Is there a cost to the insurance that you know of? Have you looked into that?
I have, I have attempted to get information on that, and I've been unsuccessful to this point. What I have been told from Hastings Bank, that Hastings financed the Thompson Lake Project that we did not get county pledge of full faith and credit on, is that most smaller institutions, when you spread out a bond to a 20-year term, the small institutions that might be familiar with the Drain Code, that might be willing to, you know, shoulder some of that risk without a county pledge of full faith and credit, aren't going to want to float 2.35 million over 20 years. And that leaves you with the larger financial institutions, and those large financial institutions will all, for the most part, require that county full faith and credit to purchase the bonds and the, the bond insurance. I don't want to say won't make a difference, because I'm, it may make a difference in some measure, but in terms of getting bidders to purchase the bonds, the full faith and credit is first required, prior to anything else.
Just a comment.
Commissioner Nakagiri, go ahead.
The, I, I would feel more comfortable, you know, getting the answer from our consultants. They, they, I've drawn the conclusion that they, for whatever reason, they're reluctant to provide in writing directly to a commissioner, you know, answers to the question. They'll go through you, which I'm not saying is unacceptable, I just find it odd when, when I specifically ask the financial consultant to answer the question and Bond Counsel to answer the question. You know, if, if they were here, I'd ask the question, you know, there, in addition to Wayne State bonds, you have the University of Michigan, you have Michigan State University, major educational institutions issuing bonds that are revenue bonds, they are not general obligation bonds, they, they don't have the full faith and credit. And how is it that they're able to sell tens of millions of dollars of bonds? I mentioned one that was 43 million dollars, but they've sold multiples of that. So why can they send these huge bonds without full faith and credit when we have to, to sell our bonds, you know, that are miniscule to, to get anybody interested in buying? Why is that? That's a question that, the answer to that?
The only answer I can give is similar to the answer Sarah gave at the FAM meeting when she was here last week, and that is, it's a different market. Revenue bonds are, are different from these bonds. You know, I'm only familiar with the Drain Code, with Section 276 of the Drain Code, which is what allows our office to, to sell bonds to, you know, for the purposes of conducting improvements on county drains. So that would be, you know, what I can tell you, and I certainly can, you know, follow up further with Laura and, and Sarah and Carrie at PFM. My understanding is PFM is the county's financial advisor, you know, and we utilize them for this Drain District process because they were an organization that Carrie, or not Carrie, that Treasurer Nash is comfortable with. In terms of Dickinson Wright, what I was told by Ms. Basset there with Dickinson Wright was that while they're, you know, representing the Drain District, obviously, that they're also representing the county in this transaction. And I can attempt to get clarification on that, certainly.
Yeah, I'll just add, to the credit of your boss, Drain Commissioner John Kier, he extended a invitation to, you know, have more extensive discussions about, you know, what, what should our, the county's policy be when we were looking at issuing full faith and credit? And I, I think that I'll take him up on having that discussion, you know. You know, I, I tend to break things down numerically. I, I want to know what, you know, taxpayers are getting and, and not getting, and, and what are the pluses and the minuses, the whole story. And, and maybe if though, in the future, if those questions are presented with another request, because there would be other requests for full faith and credit, that if that information's provided upfront, that we'd have a smoother discussion.
That's possible. I'd welcome that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't wish to try to refute my colleagues' comments or have any kind of an argument, but I just want to share some information. A few years ago, I lived in Hamburg Township, and my grandchildren were attending Pinkney High School. And I found out that Pinkney had floated a bond issue. And so I looked into it, and I thought, well, you know, I live there, and my grandchildren are going to, are attending schools in their school system, I'm going to look into their bonds. And as Ken alluded to, they were revenue bonds. And when I checked into it, the person that I was dealing with when I was asking questions said that educational school district bonds, and I suppose by extension universities, their bonds are like gold. There's rarely, very rarely a failure to pay that, it's, when you get into the world of bonds, they are the safest that you can get. Now, that applies to revenue bonds in educational institutions, and of course, what we're dealing with is different, but I just throw that out for information, is in terms of the differences in bonds. Thank you.
Further comment? Commissioner Helsner?
I think that, you know, all of this is paid by the taxpayer on their tax roll, okay? So if they don't pay their portion, they're eventually going to lose their property. But the next person that comes along and buys the property has to make good that amount before they purchase, if my understanding is correct. So the, in my mind, it's, we have a risk that's well under 10%, probably well under 2% or 3% chance of failure. I think it's almost at zero. And so that's why I don't mind doing this, because I don't, you know, I, I can't imagine the situation our country would be in if, if we failed to pay these bonds. So that would be catastrophic, I think.
Any further hands?
I have one question.
Permission?
In reference to the 23?
Yes, this is the project that goes from the Brighton Fire Hall down to School Lake along Old 23. And in addition to properties, Brighton Township already prepaid their assessment of 862,000, and the county is part of the assessment role for the project as well.
Yeah, we went over the side building.
Any other hands? Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close the discussion, and we'll go for voice of vote. I'm sorry, I'm looking at you and I'm saying the wrong thing. I meant roll call. I didn't.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
No.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helsner?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 11D, which reads 2025-07-091. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of East Complex Rooftop HVAC Equipment from Fund 403 Capital Replacement and Facility Services. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Support Deaton.
Motion by Domas, support by Deaton. Any questions, analysis, comment? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 11E. It's number 2025-07-092. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of jail rooftop unit HVAC equipment from Fund 403 Capital Replacement. Can I hear a motion?
So move, Helserman.
Support Deaton.
Motion by Helserman, support by Deaton. Any need for question, analysis, comment, discussion? Seeing none, I'll close that. We'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 11F, 2025-07-093. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Hope and Healing Counseling Services, LLC, to provide truancy diversion services to our juvenile court. Can I get a motion, please?
So move, Nakagiri.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Nakagiri, second by Domas.
Correct.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, analysis needed? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. We'll go to roll call, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 11G. It's number 2025-07-094. It's a resolution reallocating funding of the juvenile registered position brought to us by Juvenile Court.
So move, Sample.
Support Nakagiri.
Motion by Sample, second by Nakagiri. Any discussion, questions, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close that. We'll go to a roll call vote kindly.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 11H reads 2025-07-095. It's a resolution authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2026 childcare fund budget to the state of Michigan via the juvenile court. Can I get a motion?
Don't move, Gross.
Support Nakagiri.
Motion by Gross, support by Nakagiri. Discussion, questions, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 11I reads 2025-07-096. It's a resolution authorizing contracts to provide substance use mental health treatment service to specialty courts and programs brought to us by Court Central Services. Excuse me. Is there a motion?
So move, Helserman, second, Sample.
Motion by Helserman, second by Sample. Questions, discussion, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. We'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 11J, it's number 2025-07-097. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with DNA Drug and Alcohol Testing Centers to provide drug and alcohol testing services brought to us by Court Central Services on our trial courts. Can I hear a motion?
Don't move, Gross. Support Deaton.
Motion by Gross, support by Deaton. Any discussion, question, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close that, and we'll go to roll call vote.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carries.
11K reads 2025-07-098. It's a resolution to authorize a second quarter budget amendment to the fiscal year 2025 budget brought to us by Fiscal Services. Any motion?
Don't move, Helserman.
Motion by Gross, second by Helserman. Questions, analysis, comment, discussion? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're at 11L, number 2025-07-099. It's a resolution to accept the 2026 to 2031 Livingston County Capital Improvement Plan as adopted by the Livingston County Planning Commission, brought to us by Planning Department. Any motion?
So move, Sample. Support Deaton.
Motion by Sample, support by Deaton. Discussion, questions, analysis?
I have a question.
Commissioner Ponovich, you have the floor.
Yes, one of our other meetings, some discussion about $27,000 for railings, as supposed, we could have got them much cheaper. That time was brought to our attention, Board of Commissioners, that historically, this is what we had. Historically, going back to way, way back, there was a photo to reinforce this, at Cleary's in town, there were no hand risks. So how were we led to believe that we should spend $27,000 for something that historically was on the, this building? There never were. I think we were misled on that. We're talking how many thousand dollars more that we had to pay for gold-plated platinum in our guarantee for 40 to 50 years railings. So I don't know if the other commissioners are aware of that, but there was historically no railings on that building. So I think, consider that. In research, and photograph can prove that.
Thank you. Any further comment or question? Discussion's now closed on 099. We'll go to voice vote relative to the planning document. All those in favor kindly say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nine.
I oppose.
Eight to one. Passes, voice vote. We're on to 2025-07-100. It's a resolution to approve Everbridge Public Alerting System for Livingston County for the years 2025 to 2023, brought to us by Emergency Management. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Nakagiri.
Support, Helserman.
Motion by Nakagiri, support by Helserman. Questions, analysis, discussion? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. We'll go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, the voice vote carries for M. We're on to 11N, 2025-07-101. It's a resolution authorizing entering into a participation addendum through the REMC Cooperative Purchasing Program and the authorization of the purchase of the budgeted 2025 stock computer hardware order to SEHI Computer Products, brought to us by Information Technology. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the resolution.
Second, Sample.
Thank you. Motion by Fiani, second by Sample. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call kindly.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 02, excuse me, 2025-07-102. It's a resolution to increase and amend the fees charged for services at the Health Department. Motion?
Move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Support Deaton.
Motion by Domas, support by Deaton. Discussion, analysis, questions? Matt, could you come up to the table, please? Director? In your third whereas clause to the resolution, it says a vast majority of the fees are mandated. But I'm unsure of the 115, whether we're talking 80, 90%. Are there any we should be worried about that are just non-mandated that we ought to discuss? Do they come to mind?
No, I don't think so. You know, the mandated programs are like a broad project of the program. So, you know, wastewater management, drinking water quality, you know, food protection services, those are mandated services. So we charge fees within those mandated programs. The fees themselves, we're allowed to, through the Public Health Code, charge fees for those services. But is each specific fee identified? And Commissioner Nakagiri, I got your question today, and I'll get back to the board on that. But, you know, the fee, you know, each health department charges unique fees, you know, based upon what they, what they do for business within the health department. So I guess, in short, to answer your question, yeah, I would say 80 to 90% of those fees are mandated. I would say probably close to 100, really. You know, that they all fall within mandated programs the health department operates.
Okay. I don't detect any words in the resolution that there's some kind of imminent danger to the public if these fees are not approved tonight, but might be eventually. Do you, do you see any imminent danger to the public health if they're not approved today?
Well, I'm losing money. I mean, for every day that we wait.
No, I'm talking about public health. I understand the money end.
Yeah.
The public.
I mean, it's just collecting money for services we already provide. I'm, you know, just amending the fee schedule tonight is all I'm, I'm asking for. So is, by, is your question, by not approving the fee schedule, going to cause any public health?
I'm asking if the, I noticed no words raising a public imminent danger to public health if the fees are not approved. And I'm making sure that I'm not thinking about putting the, putting the public in danger. Am I correct? There's no danger if we don't do every single fee or every single amount, correct?
I suppose not. The danger is to my budget.
I've heard you say that three times. That's good. I get the, I get the drift. You, you, you were, used the word budget, and you're worried about your 2020, 2025 budget, and then 2026, correct?
Correct.
All right. I was fortunate to discuss this with you through email, and you told me that there was 889,000 roughly raised under the old fee system, and under the new fee system in '26, you think there could be about 1.0 million raised, the difference about 290,000. So it's really a $290,000 ask, correct?
I'm not asking for money. I'm asking to raise the fee schedule.
Which puts money in, which people have to pay, right?
Correct, for the services provided by the department, yes.
Right, okay. Your paperwork says that this is about a 38% increase. Did I read that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, this is based on estimates on permit volume. You know, we don't know who's going to apply for permits next year.
It's always, it's always an estimate. I get that. Does the 38% increase require any increase in services? I mean, are the people that pay the 38% increase, are they going to get more for their money? Or is it going to be same, a little bit less, a little bit more?
It's going to be the same, you know. But again, we haven't raised fees for 10 years. I don't know what we're paying the same now that we did 10 years ago either.
And you've been in the job for about four years?
In this position in 2022, so.
2022.
Three years.
Three, okay. Your paperwork, excuse me, your email to me references a study that you did, and you took into account your expenses, you took into account fees across the state. Did you think that maybe we wanted, might want to read that study? Is it, is it a study that can be developed and, and passed around so we could read the study and see the numbers ourselves? Or was it more of an oral thing that you did on a?
No, we did all the calculations. We didn't prepare it in like a publication format, but, you know, through various Excel spreadsheets, we ran the numbers and worked with our Fiscal Services Department to kind of arrive at a file number that made sense. So we didn't want fees that were going to be overly elevated based upon our counterparts here across the state. We also want to make sure we recover all, all the costs for us doing the business of the, of the service, so.
So I'm hearing it's really not reduced in writing, that you could go get a bunch of papers.
It's, it's a bunch of Excel spreadsheets. I mean, but the data exists, yes.
When I look at the motion and the budget calendar that we've passed, the departments get to do their presentations starting on August 8th for the Level 2 budgets, and budget requests and department presentations. That's pretty close to August 1st, where you'd like this to go into effect, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And if passed tonight, your 2025 budget would have about five more months of revenue in, a little bit more than it currently is, correct? So we're dealing with the 2025 budget for five months, correct?
Yes.
There are at least five places in the fee schedule that apparently for the last 10 years, you were charging no money, and it was decided to ask for varying amounts from 75 bucks up to 500 bucks. Do those people get more services for that money? Or do you still do the same, I guess, small amount of work that you used to charge zero for?
Let me just say, you know, we get some state funding for some of these programs we charge fees for, but the state funding doesn't cover, you know, our cost of doing business. The state funding has been flat, where our, you know, employee expenses have been increasing more or less exponentially for the last 10 years. So somehow, some of those services we didn't charge before, we might, we're seeing extra need and staff time in them that we didn't have before. So some of those, to capture the time staff spend on those projects, we need to charge an additional fee for, which we are allowed to do.
Under the Public Health Code?
Correct.
And the, the resolution says that there's been a decrease in federal and state funding, and I heard you use the word "flat" right now. So for the, let's say for the Environmental Health Department, has the funding been flat, or decreased, or what?
Well, I interpret "flat" as decreasing. Our.
Pardon me?
I interpret "flat" as, as a decreasing revenue source. Our expenses are increasing. They're not covering our cost of doing business. And quite frankly, I don't know what the state grants are going to be for this year, until the state budget is, is figured out, we might have additional reductions. So at this point, I'm not sure of that.
So in the state's viewpoint, they send you the same check? So, in the state's viewpoint, they send you the same check amount every year, but you're telling me it doesn't go as far?
Correct.
Okay, so the state has not truly decreased. How about the feds? Have they decreased the Environmental Health budget?
Well, it's the Health Department budget.
I'm wondering if there's some grant or something.
Yeah, we don't have federal money in, in our environmental regulatory programs. One of our programs does drinking water quality management. That money comes from the state, although it's, it's federal funds, funded through the state, but.
Okay. I'm trying to get at the notion of, you were talking in the, in the resolution that there was a decrease in federal and state funding, in addition to your other expenses going up. And I was trying to calculate whether or not we could put into dollar amounts the money that you were no longer getting. And I'm hearing we can't do that. We, we don't know how much, well, because you're, you say it's flat. It, it's, it's the same amount every year.
Well, I think so. We're projecting that for this year, but we don't know that for sure, so. I'm basing this information on it being flat funding again this year. If that funding decreases, we'll have to revisit this, but.
Right. It's called a budget amendment, right?
It's coming back for the board for something else, you know, it's, it's, yeah.
Yes, so we do that every quarter. We did one today even. So, we're not strangers to coming back. I was hoping that the amount of federal and state funding that you said in your fourth whereas clause would equal $290,000. So, we could say there's a great reason to raise fees by the $200,090 amount because either the state or the feds took away an actual $290,000. But I'm hearing that's not an argument that we can hear tonight.
Well, I also explained in my question back to you that we do transfer funds between the department, between projects. So, although the fees stay in Environmental Health and the fees stay in the Personal Health side of the department, we also get state grant funding. And that's the comprehensive agreement I come to the board every year to get approval for. That money can be moved around between projects. And that provides for some flexibility between funding models across the state and different health departments. This board doesn't provide a lot of general allocation support to the Health Department. So, I need to somehow figure out how to move that money around within the department to make us whole.
From the state?
That's state.
Comprehensive state.
The grant fund.
Yes, that, okay. We're dealing with the Environmental Health Division of your operation. And I'm wondering if the 290,000 at the Environmental Health places, like body art campgrounds, food and licenses, and septicage, and pools, whether those people are going to get the benefit of the 290 that they're paying extra? Or are, or is that money going to go over and pay somebody else in your department?
So, as I've explained, I think a couple of times already, the fees that are collected in Environmental Health stay in Environmental Health. The grant funding can be moved around, so that.
So, these, these fees that we're talking will stay?
Yes. Well, I, again, it's one department. I don't know why we're splitting one division versus another division. I have to, my responsibility is to run the Health Department. And I have to do that based upon the funding model that I have. So, if I have some ability to move funding around with, with the grant funds and then raise fees in Environmental Health side to cover our regulatory expenses, that's what I need to do. As a department, I, I don't look at the department as two pieces of the department. It's one whole department, and I need to bring, you guys, a balanced budget at the end of the day. So, that's what I'm trying to do.
So, the 290 that the people in Environmental Health customers might pay for some other part of the Health Department?
No, they're paying for that fee that they're, if they apply for a permit, they're getting that service for that permit.
Correct. And then the money's in the account. But if you need to spend it at some other place in the Department of Health, you'll spend it?
No.
No, okay. So, that's what I thought one of your email answers were, that at the end of the year, if it was surplus, it would be a general fund.
If it's surplus, it goes in the general fund, or it goes into our fund balance. And that has happened in the past when.
All right.
You know, Livingston County.
There is a way, there is a way that this money doesn't, I'm going to say, benefit the people that paid it. So, if I'm a, I'm a tattoo parlor, and I give you 780 bucks for a plan review, there's a chance that 780 doesn't stay in Environmental Health to help body art folks. There's a chance that that money goes to vaccines, or goes to hearing for little kids, or vision tests for little kids, right?
No.
No. So, what's the deal with, if it goes into general fund and there's a surplus, and you can spend it someplace else? That's what I thought your email told me.
Yeah, if we have a surplus. You know, I don't, I don't expect there to be one the next few years. Quite honestly, I don't see us putting money back into our fund balance. I, I wish that would be true. I can't predict in environment at this point that that would be true. I, it was very true back in, you know, the late 90s, early 2000s, when I started with the Health Department. And we were building houses all over the place, and we had very high permit volume. And that's when our department started building our fund balance, you know, during those years with that, with the permit revenue. And so, this isn't unique today. I mean, this has been how the Health Department has operated as long as I've worked there.
Final question. Your email listed that you looked at your wages in your Health Department, the loss of grants that, you have a different definition than I do. I don't think you lost any grants. And you studied other county fees. Is there anything else you used as a criteria for deciding how to make the fees go up 290,000 bucks?
No, that's the data we used.
Okay. Because you were kind enough in your resolution to cite the statute for the Public Health Code. And there's a section 333.2497 that the State of Michigan had to develop the criteria that you're supposed to use. And I was wondering if you knew that section, and if you knew that criteria.
Develop the criteria for what?
To determine the reasonable and allowable costs to recover as fees.
And I would suggest that our methods did that very, that, that very thing. There's not a prescriptive recipe in the Public Health Code that tells you how to do that.
The Public Health Code suggests that there is.
I've never seen.
It says it's called, it's called the criteria under Section 333.2479. And I'm, I, I don't know if you used that criteria.
I would think the criteria would be, as, as I stated before, it's, you know, it's, it's the cost of doing business, and to be kept competitive in the market, and, and be able to, you know, balance our budget. And I'm not increasing fees for the sake of balancing the budget. I'm increasing fees to the sake to be competitive and, and recover our employee costs going forward.
I understand the two parts. I'm just trying to establish that I don't think you used the criteria that the state said you ought to use.
I don't believe there is such, I'm sure, Drake, I'll disagree. I don't think there is any such criteria. I think there is broad language in the Public Health Code that talks about recovering a reasonable fee. There is no recipe in the, and legal counsel is here. Maybe legal counsel could weigh in on that.
It would depend if he studied up. So, it's my opinion that there's no data given to us tonight that you've lost any grant money from state or federal in the environmental section that would make the people that pay the bills or the fees in the environmental should increase at all. I, I, I dispute that. But I don't think this should be your only chance at the bite of the apple. I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this and put it over into budget so that we can keep on working this and figure out if there is the state criteria and whether it was used. And then whether there is a true need because you didn't come up with any lost money tonight. You've caught, but come up with expenses, but you say in your resolution that grants didn't come through, but you don't have them. So, I'm making a motion that we postpone to put this over into the budget process. And that's not a long time, because your budget process comes up on August 8.
No, our, our budget is due on August 8. We presented to the Board of Commissioners in September. I wouldn't be able to get this on a board agenda until October. So, that means it wouldn't be effective till November or December.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion about the motion to postpone?
Yeah, I would like to, oh.
Go ahead. Proceed.
I just want to make the comment that, you know, for, in, in my calculation, we'll have five, if we were to approve the fees tonight, the fee increase, they would take place, you know, starting in August. So, you have five months out of the year. So, five divided by 12, times 290,000 of annual fee increases. I, my quick calculation says we are, for the remainder of the year, you know, if we raise fees, we'll generate 120,000 in fees. I think it might be better, even though I voted, you know, to second the, go into the budget, to postpone it to the next meeting, to hammer out some of these issues. One issue that I have, and I, I do have trouble, I, I do, does cause me heartburn when we, if we say we're going to take fees, and I view fees differently than general taxes. If we take fees for service, and, you know, the fees that we charge ought to be commensurate with the service that's provided. If the fees are too high, and then therefore we put money into the, into reserves for the next year, and then those reserves could be, aren't specifically used to benefit the fee payers, that causes me heartburn. And I, that, that I hope the board would agree with me on that and, and enact some kind of policy that would say fees for service are, you know, go specifically for that service. Thank you for the chance to clarify.
Commissioner Gross?
I'm opposed to postponing this for several reasons. First of all, Mr. Chair, you received a letter from the State Department of Health and Human Services dated April 1, which identifies that the federal government has sent the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services notice of cancellation of federal funding. And it went on to describe the areas of federal funding. Director Bowling has since given us all information that as a result of that federal grant funding being removed, he has realized a loss of revenue of $910,000. So, I, I think he's got a valid request to try to recoup some of that by increasing fees going forward. I have to remind my, our colleagues that the fees for the Health Department have not been changed in over 10 years. And it, it's mind-boggling that we didn't pay attention to that back a long time ago. And so, you know, it, it's time to, to get caught up. And I'm impressed by the fact that in the resolution, there's language that says going forward, the fees will be adjusted for the CPI increase every year, if there is an increase, and normally there is. So, we've got some, some protection that we won't have a catastrophic differential in revenue versus expense going forward. So, I, I think the fee increases identified are reasonable, and I think we should proceed with voting on this resolution.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Sample?
I have two.
Go ahead.
So, is it postponed? Has it been amended to the next meeting at this point, or is it?
No.
Not yet. All right. I was curious, but, uh, for, to simplify this for me, that your current fee, does it cover the, and out of all these fees, do most of the, does the current fee cover the cost of it?
Uh, some of them, yes, some of them, no.
Do the new fees exceed the cost of the service?
Some do, yes.
Okay. I, I guess I was just curious if, if we've been collecting less in fees than what our expenses are.
I would suggest we have been for a few years.
Do you think it's in excess of 290,000?
Could be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's probably some lost revenue over, you know, quite honestly, when COVID happened, we were, we were flush with money. We had federal money, you know, this is not something that happened overnight. It's been happening for a few years. But, you know, to, to make these changes during a pandemic, when, you know, we, we had plenty of funding in the department, it just didn't make sense.
Yeah, I'm just asking because I'm thinking that the fees are structured to pay for the services. And that when you're talking about moving things around, it's the grant funding that comes in that has flexibility to move.
Correct.
You're covering the cost of the service with the fees, and the grant funding is then being able to be utilized elsewhere in the budget.
Because it's flexible to do that, yes.
That, that's where I was generating my question. So, that's why I was asking if these fees exceed the cost of the service. You know, or under, or have we been collecting under every year for 10 years now? That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
My question is about the automatic, and maybe that's not the right term. It says, "Further be resolved that the fee schedules shall be adjusted annually on January 1 each year based on inflation over the last 12 months, et cetera." Is that an automatic determined by the Health Department? Or is that something that will come before this board every, every year? I'm, because it says it shall be adjusted annually. The question is, is that an, is that going to be an automatic? Is that, will that follow normal procedure that will come to the board every January 1?
So, Commissioner Helsman, that was, that was my intention, is it was automatic. My intention was that, the way the language is written in the resolution, it would be an automatic increase on January 1 each year.
Okay, so, so we are not only, not only increasing these fees, but we're, every year, the adjustment that you feel is, is right every year would be an automatic?
Correct, because I think that's why we're in the situation now, waiting 10 years to raise the fees, as they look like they're a dramatic jump up. Because it's been 10 years. We've not been recovering our cost for service during that 10-year span, where I've had quite drastic increases in staffing and internal service expenses in the department. So, to raise them incrementally each year is, is maybe not as painful for that end user. And I'm not coming to the board every five or 10 years for a larger increase each time.
Okay. For, for that, if, if that's the way that you understand it, and, and I see that as easily interpreted as that, I would support postponing. Because I think, I think automatic increases are not, you know, that don't come before the board, or not. It's not the right way to do it.
Thank you. Anyone else? In speaking to Commissioner Gross's points, the 910,000 in that letter was solely COVID money. None of it was for environmental services. None of it was.
Commissioner Drake, can I disagree with that? Just, just.
If you interrupt me, I'll ask you to cease. So, because this is board discussion now. The 910 was, in that letter, was COVID money that was stopped because the Trump administration said, "We think that's done." In fact, there was a, an order by Biden during his term that COVID emergency was over. So, you can't count that as a, as a loss to the environmental side of the house that the people in the tattoos parlors or the owners of the restaurants should somehow make up. I was really hoping that there was actual money that was taken away from the environmental side of the house that we could make up. But even though it says in black and white, there were state and federal funds lost, we hear tonight that there was no federal or state funds lost.
Were only part of the operation. I mean, I'm looking at his total department.
Yeah, well, I also have a difficulty with having the people in the, in the environmental side pay 290,000 and perhaps have a surplus that goes into the general fund that then the people on the other side that didn't pay the freight get the benefit. So, that's the difficulty.
And it would be seen if there's going to be a surplus.
But if, if we, if we change it now, we can make sure that it's correct then. And that's why merely postponing it to have a budget discussion also helps in that regard. Plus, we'll have the advantage of our administrative staff analyzing some of these things to see whether jumping from 0 to $500 is, and, and one of the fees. whether jumping from zero to $500 is, and, and one of the fees is appropriate. We've just heard the concession that some of the fees exceed the cost of the service. So.
So is there something more off making a profit?
Yes. Taxpayers shouldn't have to pay that. And I'll bet you the, the statute, when it says the criteria, has nothing to do with profit. So once we get the statute and the criteria under the statute, statute, we'll know whether we should be including profit. Well, also, I, I also have a problem with other counties somehow telling us what to do. I really don't care if other counties charge more or less than us. It's irrelevant. I'm a commissioner for Livingston County, and whether they do it in Ingham, or Jackson, or Saginaw, or anyplace else, I think is just irrelevant.
But on the other hand, if somebody's trying to make an informed decision, what they tell is wrong with approaching neighboring counties, similar organizations, just to find out what they're doing, just to ask the question.
I didn't say that, I didn't say there was something wrong. I said it should not be binding. What should be binding is what the statute says the criteria are. And we don't know, because our director has said that he didn't, he doesn't think the statute has criteria. And I'm thinking, when the word criteria is in the statute, it's there someplace, we just have to find it. That's why a little bit of time to rethink this at budget, I think is appropriate. Does that spark any other questions? Commissioner Nakagiri?
If, if the vote to postpone, you know, goes through, and we look at this, you know, and we, you know, take a look at this as part of the budget, are we, when will we actually vote on whether we want to do the, you know, adopt the, a resolution or an amended resolution? Are we waiting till the budget? Or could it happen before we actually vote on the budget? Because the vote on the budget is in November.
Wasn't.
Well, if it's a.
Till the next meeting?
No. If it's a 2025 budget request, we could do it prior. If it's a 26 budget request, and a lot of the numbers in here are for 2026, then it would wait till November 24th, 2025.
I, I think, you know, I mean practically, you know, my thought is that, you know, if we approve a fee increase for 2025, and it's likely that we will, that it, we, we ought to adopt a fee, the, the fee per service delivered to be the same for 2026, as opposed to raising the fee in 2025 and then raising the fee starting again in 2026. That's just my opinion. I, I think it's better just to decide what the fee should be and, and start it somewhere in 2025. I think, in my mind, I'm, I'm desirous of understanding exactly when we would have a vote to adopt a, a fee increase. If we're, would it be with the budget? Is that what your thoughts are, Commissioner?
I'm thinking that there are budget presentations scheduled for August. Says here, department presentations and budget requests.
So it could conceivably, we could be voting on this again in, at the, in our August full board meeting, either at mid, middle of the month or the end of the month? Am I, is my thinking correct?
I think that's correct. Thank you. Any other comment or discussion? Commissioner Helserman?
Does the, our council have an idea of what the criteria that the Health Department has to follow in setting fees?
I do now.
Thank you.
Give me enough. So there is no set criteria established by MDHHS. What they do allow is for the local departments of environmental health to establish fees. But the statute says that the fee has to be reasonably related. All right, I just cut and paste it into a draft email for myself. The fee charge shall not be more than the reasonable cost for performing the service. So that is really the extent of the statutory requirement for the fees, is that the fees need to be tied to the reasonable cost for performing the service. That doesn't necessarily mean one-to-one, but it also doesn't necessarily allow for you to make in profit. I heard that mentioned at some point that. What it does say is that the, we have to have a rational relationship, that's reasonable cost for performing service with all fees charged. But the state defers to the local Health Department in order to establish. They did not publish a list of set criteria.
Does the.
Even though, Chair, I did note that provision in the statute. So I'm not sure why the state doesn't, but they don't.
We'll do some research. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, can I just clarify? The motion to postpone to the budget process is the motion that I have. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, right here, we have a calendar. That's not indefinite.
I'm just asking.
We'll try voice vote. All those in favor of the motion to postpone kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm hearing eight to one to postpone. It passes.
Now it's to amend it. You have to have a vote for the amended resol.
Yes.
No, that was.
No, that was the most.
Postpone.
Yep, I, it wasn't to amend.
Oh, okay.
You, you were thinking of amending.
Yeah.
But it didn't occur.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
And I'll get with you in the next few days, and we'll continue to ask your side, okay? I'm not abandoning anything.
Okay.
Okay. We're up for the next motion. You can stay right there because it's yours. My agenda tells me that it is. 11 P, 2025-07-103. It's a resolution to reduce and reorganize workforce brought to us by the Health Department. Can I get a motion? So moved, Helserman.
Support.
Motion by Helserman, support by Domas. Discussion, analysis, questions. Commissioner Nakagiri, you have the floor.
Thank you. Director Bowling, I want to appreciate, I express my appreciation for all the information you sent me, especially on the epidemiologist. I do have a question regarding the role of an epidemiologist in general, and, and what the specific role or how, you know, what, what it is in Livingston County. Because my, my understanding from reading around, epidemiologists should be primarily focused on, you know, providing the data, you know, that, to improve health outcomes in Livingston County. And from that, I mean, is that, do you generally agree with that, or is that, I mean, is that, am I?
I generally agree with that. I mean, they help gather, and I provided you a lot of information. I think I copied much of the board on all that, too. I mean, it's looking at all the existing data sources, helping our staff draw conclusions from those data sources, and then, you know, provide some actions moving forward. Now, that position doesn't, may suggest some intervention actions, but, you know, that is done, you know, at a leadership level in our department. But I, I think you're generally correct on that.
The, from that standpoint, you know, I, I did, I shouldn't surprise them, I did Google around a little bit, and, and concluded that, you know, health, or heart disease and cancer are, you know, for any given county, the state of Michigan, you know, is a, probably the biggest health issue in terms of what, you know, causes mortality. Do you concur with that?
Yeah, chronic disease is a hard one for a health department to tackle. I mean, we can tackle uncomical diseases because they're happening right now in real time. We don't get direct funding for chronic disease investigations. If we had funding for that purpose, we, yeah, I think that is a priority.
Okay, so in part, the priority is, you know, it sounds like in part the priority is what you get funding from the state of Michigan for?
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank, that's.
Yep.
All the, all the questions I have.
Any other questions or comment? Commissioner Helserman, you have the floor.
Are most of these reductions due to the new spirit in Washington, that we're not getting as much money? Is that, is that part of it? Is part of it also that we are, because I think that we had positions that were COVID-related, and I think that those have already been taken care of or, or reduced. So this is, this is beyond the COVID-related reductions?
Yes, I, there's one historical COVID-related position, it's not filled right now, is a part-time epidemiologist that I'm planning to remove during the budget cycle. But the rest of it is, is Commissioner Drake alluded to earlier, I mean, that's historical COVID funding that we did lose. We were using that to help support mandated programs, and we weren't using it for COVID. So, but that, yeah, most of the reductions in staff are directly related to that, you know, and with our increased cost and, and staffing expenses.
Okay, and are most of these positions filled?
Yes. They all are.
Okay, so, well, we wish you well, and our county well. It's not, letting good people go is not easy. And, but we appreciate you taking the lead on this and making those hard decisions.
Thank you. No, it's not easy. It's very difficult, yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chair? Any further? Commissioner Gross, go ahead.
I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Helserman's comments. It's unfortunate that this resolution is separate from the one that preceded it, because this particular resolution is in part required because of the loss of federal funding, regardless of what the program was. Between the loss of federal funding, increased costs, frozen fee schedules for over 10 years, the Health Department is faced with the prospect of operating at a significant loss. And that's one reason why is I'm reluctant to, to approve this because people are involved, but it's necessary. And I, I felt that the previous resolution, had we approved it, would have provided some additional help to the Health Department in terms of minimizing their operating loss for this fiscal year. The way I see it now, if we don't, if we don't approve a fee schedule change soon, we're going to have a significant budget amendment at the end of the year, covering a significant loss for the Health Department, which is most unfortunate. Thank you.
Any further comment or analysis, question, discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're at Q, and it's 2025, 2025-07-104. It's a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for transportation services between Livingston County and Hamburg Township, brought to us by LETS. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Gross. Support Deaton.
Motion by Gross, support by Deaton. Any need for further analysis, discussion, or questions? Seeing none, I'll close that. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I've heard nine zero as the count of the voice vote passes. We're at 2025-07-105. It's a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for transportation services between Livingston County and the townships of Putnam and Unadilla, also by, brought to us by LETS. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Gross.
Support.
Go ahead, Sample.
Second, Sample.
Motion by Gross, support, and second by Commissioner Sample, even though there was an arm wrestle.
We co-second.
Questions, analysis, discussion, if needed. Seeing none, I'll close discussion. We'll go to a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero was the voice vote. It passes. We're at S, 2025-07-106. It's a resolution to accept funding from Trinity Health's Investing in Our Communities Grant Program to support a Community Connections Bus Route, brought again by LETS. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support for Helserman.
Commissioner Domas motioned, support by, I wasn't certain. Helserman? Thank you. Any analysis, questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll close that. It'll be voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
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 Nine to zero was the voice vote. It passes. We're at 11 T. It's number 2025-07-107. It's a resolution authorizing capital expenditure for the purchase of one replacement van from LETS. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Helserman.
Support Deaton.
Motion by Helserman, support by Deaton. Any questions, analysis, objections, discussion? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. We'll need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're at item U. It's 2025-07-108. It's a resolution authorizing fiscal year 2026 vehicle leases, plural, through the county's partnership with Enterprise Fleet Management, brought to us by Carpool. Has, has anyone wished to make a motion?
So moved, Gross. Support Deaton.
Moved by Gross, support by Deaton. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll close that. This is a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nine to zero was the voice vote. It passes. We're at sub V. It is 2025-07-109. It's a resolution authorizing the reallocation of ARPA funds for the, to the ARPA Fiber Project, brought by both Board of Commissioners. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Nakagiri.
Second, Sample.
Motion by Nakagiri, second by Sample. Discussion? Commissioner Helserman?
I'm disappointed that this was not, this money was not given to its original purpose. I think it was a very good purpose, and I wish that it had stayed there. I think our fiber project is probably, you know, any project can take more money, but I'm also disappointed that our, that our ARPA-funded fiber has not connected any individual customers to this point, to my knowledge, which that was, that's a lot of money. But we hope that the, the, our, our fiber project finds use worthy of the money. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comment? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Actually, I have a question, probably for our county administrator. This money that's going, that we're going to transfer, is there a time by which it has to be spent? Because, you know.
2026.
Okay, same, the same as the.
Yep, yep. It, it, this money has to go to a previously approved project that is eligible for ARPA. So for us, that's the fiber project.
That's the only project we have, right?
It's the only one that really makes sense, the only one that we have. And when we approve a new EMS base, after we approve the fiber project, this money will be directed towards the additional work to get fiber to that EMS base. And there are also a couple of other areas where expenses are a tad higher than expected. So the money will be used appropriately for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? We'll close discussion, and we will do a roll call vote on ARPA funds to the ARPA Fiber.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner. Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton. Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're at 11W. It is 2025-07-110. It's a resolution to implement Michigan's non-opioid directive to enhance emergency medical services, brought to us by Board of Commissioners. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Support Deaton.
Motion by Domas, support by Deaton. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 11X. It's number 2025-07-111. It's a resolution authorizing agreements for opioid settlement funding. Do I hear a motion?
So moved Nakagiri.
Support Deaton.
Motion by Nakagiri, support by Deaton. Any discussion? Questions, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. Voice vote, kindly say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing nothing, it was a nine to zero voice vote for 11X. It passes. We're on to 11Y. It's number 2025-07-112. It's a resolution authorizing a project cost increase for historic courthouse administration concrete construction, brought by Facility Services.
So moved Sample. Support Deaton.
Motion by Sample, support by Deaton. The reason it's back is that when the attorney said we were violating a statute with a no bond vote, that we weren't going to put a bond on the project, the attorney found that there's a statute that said we have to do at least a 25% bond or anything up to 100%. So I was not authorized to sign the contract. So that's why it's brought back, so we can find out at what level do you want to bond? 25%? All the way up to 100%? I believe the 6,000 in the resolution is 100%. Right, Kevin?
That is correct, and that is the only thing offered by the current awarded vendor. And I had checked with our other currently awarded vendors, like Summit Construction, and they do not, they're not offered anything other than a 100% performance bond on the total project cost.
So we're going to comply with the statute. That'll be over 25%. And we have difficulties if we try to make it less than 100. That's our reason for our last resolution. Any questions?
If I may, it is also to decide where that is funded from.
Oh, that's quick.
Whether we will be taking that funding from the contingency fund or if it will be added back to the construction base price. I'd recommend that we add it back to the base price because the project has not started yet. We've already reduced the contingency fund by 50%, so I have only 15,000 on the project. So that would be my recommendation to add it to the base price.
Thank you for adding that. That helps.
Thank you.
So I guess I'm looking for a motion to do the amount of the bond and take it out of base price, I believe was the concept.
So Chair, this
Attorney, go ahead.
This resolution is drafted, and it may be just to amend the resolution where it presented those thoughts. And if you're going to accept them, that's a direct recommendation here. I would just suggest that you see the area bracketed. I can identify those review that are consistent with the recommendations, which is at the 1, 2, 4, 5, whereas clause. It has the bonding cost of $6,002.
And a blank for the, to be paid for. And the blank is to be paid for, right?
That is not the most up-to-date resolution, like we discussed this morning.
Got updated.
It's here. Madam Clerk, do you have the most updated?
I'm using the copy that was at my desk rather than in the board packet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, then yes, I do have the most current.
Our record will be complete and correct.
So in that whereas clause in the bracket, if this is your prerogative, do so, a motion would be in order that that whereas will read, will be added to the total project construction cost for a total construction cost of 193,150, including the $15,000 differences. And the rest of that whereas will be struck.
Does any commissioner have a question or does not understand? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, are you set with how the record's going to read?
I just want to clarify that whatever is selected in this whereas that's under discussion, it's going to change all further whereases where there's options. Okay.
And will you stay around a little bit afterwards to make sure the record is correct? Thank you.
The last whereas clause, the number 2,002,516, will be in the resolution. And then the far part says, or, 196,504 will be struck. The first, therefore be a resolved. Second line, the bracket, that number will be in 193,150. Or 187,148 will be struck. There's a second bracket, fourth line down, and that same first, therefore be a resolved. That will read overall complete project cost of 2,025,16. Or 196,514 will be struck.
All good.
Very good.
Set those things, but a motion to amend would be in order to accomplish those.
Make a motion to amend everything he just did, to put it at the, to strike the 180, the 196, the numbers he stated.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion to amend?
We'll support everything he said, and he said.
First, we'll vote. First, we'll do a voice vote on the amendment. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. Now we'll do a roll call vote on the entire amended resolution.
Can I ask a question of the Director before we have the vote?
Sure.
That we can only do 100%? Is that because of the contractor only does that? Or does the contractor have an insurance company that does that? I mean, what's the?
That, that's correct. It's based on the insurance company, so it could vary from contractor to contractor, which is why I checked with Summit, who we also have recently done work with, kind of understand what the normal routine would be here. And they described to me that only in a situation, let's say, a billion-dollar project on a high-rise building, only in a situation where a subcontractor was obligated to be bonded for some reason, would it only be bonded for their portion of that project, therefore being a 25, 35, whatever it may be? Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. I believe now we're all set to vote on the amended matter by roll call.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We're at item number 12, called Accounts Payable Reports. 12A reads claims dated July 28, 2025. 12B reads payables dated July 8 through July 29, 2025. Can I get a motion for both 12A and B?
So moved Gross.
Motion by Gross, is there a second?
Domas.
Thank you, Commissioner Domas, for your second. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor? Let's go down. Wait a minute. Commissioner Fiani wants to speak for the first time tonight. We'll let him.
So earlier this evening, we approved a contract between the Livingston County Courts and Key Development Center and Livingston County Catholic Charities. Now, I, it's my understanding, through years of experience and community involvement, and from what I've heard, that both organizations are very well-respected and highly, highly recommended. And I'm glad we approved this resolution. It's immensely, immensely disappointing, if true, that I've heard recently that Judge Susan Longsworth has actually turned down, from my understanding, evaluations performed by Key Development Center. And now he turned down those evaluations and what has been recommended, but also advising people who are participating in our court to go to services in Washaw County, which I think is appalling, again, if it's true. I've heard this on multiple occasions, which leads me to think it is true. I think it's ironic that at the recommendation of the court, these two organizations come before us, and yet Judge Longsworth apparently is, in my opinion, not knowledgeable enough, or perhaps, I hope this isn't the case, but has some underlying reasoning for her, her actions. I'll go further and say it's incredibly disappointing to hear multiple reports of Judge Susan Longsworth, in my opinion, temperament within the courtroom. For some reason, this seems to be reoccurring more and more recently. It is, in my opinion, becoming an embarrassment to the county. I'm hopeful that, again, if what I'm hearing throughout the community is true, that Judge Longsworth will take that into consideration, and perhaps, in my opinion, she should participate in anger management courses and continuing legal education courses.
Thank you. We're back to the vote on Accounts Payable 12A and B. All those voice vote, if you're in favor, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote is nine to zero for both A and B. They both pass. We're at item number 13, Call to the Public, two minutes. Have you any cards?
I do have one. Mr. Steve Williams, Marion Township.
Steve, come on up.
Colonel. Hello again, gentlemen. So, yes, you know, not only did Judge Longsworth decide that she does not want to believe what I have to say, and, and has actually stated that I'm not credible, despite the fact that I held a top-secret security clearance for 30 years, a secret security clearance for eight years, requiring more background checks probably than anyone she will ever see in her career as a judge, but she also said I'm a bad father, and I take exception to that. She said that twice, okay? So I will mention, I have three adult daughters, all of whom have at least one four-year degree from Michigan schools, and all of whom live in Livingston County, one of whom you met last year, Megan, right? Graduate of Michigan Technological University with a degree in mechanical engineering, also known as Michigan's toughest university. Megan owns her second house now, which she bought, partially completed, had to complete it itself. She would ask me to give a shout out for our building department, our health department, and our road commission for the assistance she gave her with that. Megan spent two days last week volunteering at the Ball of Fair. She also sponsors a trophy every year, just like her old man, and she was up in Commissioner Domas's area. She organized a cleanup of the Deerfield Hills Nature Center. Shannon, my middle daughter, is a graduate of Michigan State University Veterinary School, which I would remind the judge, is, you know, a tougher school to get into and graduate from than any law school in the nation. Shannon just got back from a trip to South America where she volunteered with a Christian veterinary group to provide free services. And then Kalen, my oldest daughter, has three degrees, Lansing Community College, Michigan State University, and Michigan Technological University. Kalen did not accept the GI Bill money I split with the other girls, and yet still has managed to earn three degrees and bought her first house. She had 22 years of age. So, sorry, but I'm very proud of my daughters, and I think that judge is way out of line for saying things like that to people. That's all.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Next card?
John Conley.
He's still chair stuck. He's a big guy.
Good evening, Board. John Conley, Brighton. I wasn't really prepared to speak tonight, except for I heard that the money was reappropriated from the NJRO TC that was set for Brighton Schools, was used tonight for a fiber program. I want to share with you that Brighton Area Schools has six sections of bake shop, full sections of bake shop in their school, and they didn't have room for the NJRO TC. But six sets, can you imagine that there's that many students who are going to go into culinary arts? Probably not. And the recruiting method used, I believe, was inferior in Brighton Schools as well. And it's a sad day. Really was sad that that didn't take place. The program got to the point that the Navy did appear in Brighton, proved the program in full, uniforms were hanging in the racks. This program is ready to launch. I believe that we'll look at it again. Not necessarily with the Navy, be another branch of service potentially, but I wouldn't say we're done with it yet. But at this time, with the current state of affairs in Brighton, they don't believe that it's, I think I was told that they didn't think their students desired it and/or that anyone needed it. I recall the quote. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Board, for the help in getting to the point we got to. And you never know, maybe if I can run it again. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other cards?
I have no further cards.
Thank you. And on our Zoom, I believe there's a hand up.
Yes, Commissioner, I have Lori Cowan.
Ms. Cowan, you may proceed. You've got your two minutes.
No, thank you very much. Some of what I've heard tonight has been extremely concerning to me. Commissioner Helsnerman's remarks that call to the public about Judy Dovin Meyer and the Democrats is so off the mark and offensive, and unfortunately, his remarks are based solely on lies and misinformation. And in addition, the report by Dr. Austin, I believe her name was, is disturbing as well. Following her recommendations will only put one's health at risk and are based on inaccurate reports. Her findings on masks is inaccurate, which is based on lies and misinformation, as well as her comments on the COVID vaccine. I'm truly concerned that this Health Advisory Committee is now anything but a committee to help keep our county healthy and safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people on Zoom?
No, Commissioner, I do not see any.
Thank you. Okay. The second call to the public is now closed. We're at item number 14, Commissioner Comments. Does anyone wish to have a comment tonight? Commissioner Nakagiri, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I'm deeply troubled by the allegations made against Judge Longsworth, if true, and I have, I think there's ample evidence, firsthand testimony tonight from a citizen that it is true. He has firsthand knowledge that, my thoughts are, we need to really examine what we're doing. We cannot turn a blind eye to this bad behavior. I'm reflecting back to Judge Brennan, who I'm told was, you know, had bad behavior for a long time before action was actually taken, and I hope we don't wait that long if, if, for having Judge Brennan Jr. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Domas, you have the floor.
Yeah. In spite of the fact that Mr. Williams was Army and I was Air Force, we have a lot in common, and I was disappointed in the treatment that he has received at the hands of the court. Nobody, nobody reaches the rank of Lieutenant Colonel with any, any description as the court levied him. So, thank you.
Any other comment? Seeing none, at 8:29. At 8:29, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Helsnerman. Support Deaton.
Motion by Helsnerman, support by Deaton. All those in favor kindly vote in with your voice saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nine to zero, we are adjourned.